Still loading, just one second. Okay, we should be live now.
All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Ms. Brownie, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. McGory?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Zuloff?
Here.
Mr. Whalen?
Here.
Ms. Castile?
Here.
And Mr. Jackson?
Here.
All right, commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting, February 24, 2021. What is your pleasure?
I would move they be approved as submitted. Pete McGory.
Second, David Miller.
Mr. Chairman.
There's been a motion and second of Mr. Zuloff.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that regarding the Lutheran Church application, I did mention that I would be abstaining and why, that I would not be voting and why. I didn't catch that on the minutes, but I'd like us to review the minutes and maybe correct that if it's warranted.
But it does note, Mr. Zuloff, that you abstained from voting.
No, but it doesn't say, when I made my remarks, I said that I would be and I stated the reason.
Okay, well then, why don't you make, I would suggest, sir, that you make a motion to amend the minutes to supplement whatever you feel is spoken.
That's kind of what I'm getting to. I kind of hope to get with Kristen before the meeting, but I usually, you know, there's that kind of correction, but really wasn't, there were other pressing issues today.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't you just state by a motion what you would like to have added just above new business?
That I stated that I wouldn't be voting because although I don't believe I have a conflict, it could appear that I do, so just to avoid the appearance, I stated that I wouldn't be voting. That would be commonly known as abstention, not a recusal.
Okay, that's a motion. Is there a second to that motion to amend?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. McGory. Is there any opposition to that motion? Then the motion and the amendment, I should say, becomes part of the minutes. Is there any further discussion or objection to the minutes as amended? And without objection, the minutes will be approved as amended. Mr. Brady, you are present with us and you have something to share with us, I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to speak, and I want to take this opportunity to thank each of our Planning Commission members for serving on this board. It is a, oftentimes, it is a thankless job, but it is so very necessary in our city. You play a key role, each of you do, and I want you to know that I appreciate each of your service and your diligence to the matters that come before you. Late this afternoon, our city manager and myself met with representatives of the Corso family, Chad Corso and Fritz Mueller. As a result of that meeting, Corso's have asked me to inform this Planning Commission of their decision to withdraw their application, their three applications that are before you today, for dormitory housing at the former St. Paul's Church. They wish to reserve their right to resubmit this application for this location or any other potential locations within the city at a later date. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Well, then, as the chair of the meeting, I will remove those three items from our agenda, and it is not necessary that the Planning Commission take any action on the reservation. That exists for anyone who wishes to make an application. They always have the right to reapply. So, but those will be deemed withdrawn, and thank you, Mr. Brady. You're welcome to stay. You might have something else to do perhaps, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have pressing business regarding a dinner reservation. Thank you very much.
Good for you. Thank you for being here. Mr. Horstman, we'll turn the meeting over to you to commence the first adjudication hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we may, as it is an adjudication hearing, swear in any members who wish, any parties who wish to speak during these presentations.
And in addition to Mr. Reising, I apologize, sir, if I mispronounced your name. We've never met before. Was there anyone else who would be speaking, Mr. Horstman, other than you?
The second application was also adjudication hearing.
Oh, you wish to do it at the same time. And then who is here for that? Mr. Snyder?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, then, Mr. Reising and Mr. Snyder, if you both please raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Robert Reising.
Do solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth.
Do solemnly swear to tell the truth, the full truth.
And nothing but the truth, so help me God.
And nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Horstman, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a very brief presentation to summarize the staff report submitted to the Mission for Residential Use in General.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. Mr. Horstman cannot be heard. I can't hear. If everyone could mute their microphones when they're not speaking, it might get rid of the feedback.
Okay, I think that's better.
Yes.
Thank you all. Again, this is a conditional use permit application for residential use in a general manufacturing zoning district. And to give some context of the site location, this is on Monroe Street. The parcel is highlighted here for you on the screen. The overhead view of the parcel is shown here, and I can move back to the slides if any members wish during subsequent discussion. The reason for this application is that any residential uses, any manufacturing zone district, must receive a conditional use permit from the planning commission. Any residential use that is approved through a conditional use permit must follow the requirements as met through the R-140 Single Family Residential Zoning District guidelines. The applicant did submit the site plan of the proposal, a 2,500 square foot dwelling, and just as a note to the commission, if the conditional use permit is granted, this dwelling would need to follow the normal processes of going through building and zoning clearance review as subsequent to any conditional use permit to ensure that the zoning requirements of the dwelling are met. In conclusion, staff had no objection to the granting of the certificate, sorry, the conditional use permit for this particular property. That concludes my remarks from staff report.
Commissioner Murray, you're muted.
Oh, I don't know how many times we've all heard that in the last year, but thank you for letting me know. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Horstman at this time, or should we hear from Mr. Reising next, and then we'll follow up with questions later on? So unless someone has a question they want to ask Mr. Horstman at this point, I would ask Mr. Reising if you have some comments, sir.
Nothing to say other than it's a beautiful piece of property right on Mills Creek, and Sandusky's a great growing city of small stature. I live in a large city in Florida, and I feel a home on that property would be a very added, a positive added addition to the neighborhood, and I'm going to get a bike trail right across the street here in the next year or two, and very close to downtown Sandusky, and it's about two-thirds of an acre, and there's just a lot of positive things, and I think it's going to be a great place to come.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, Pete McGory, from what I can see and hearing what I just heard, I'm in favor of this. I'll go on the record as saying that personally I'm in favor of approving this. I see no reason not to, let's put it that way.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Zuloff? Normally, I'd be skeptical of, you know, plunking a residential use in the middle of a commercial industrial area and arguably almost heavy industrial. In this particular case, it's pretty mixed out there. This is a case where it actually isn't interesting. You've got views of the water, you're on the edge of a creek. I can see this thing, this house having an attraction long term. I worry sometimes about doing something that's ill-advised because owners don't live forever and somebody's got to live with the outcome someday. I don't see the problems that you might otherwise see in conflicts. The potential of conflict is there, but there's enough mitigating it that I can certainly vote in favor of this.
Thank you. Further questions or comments?
I have one more comment. Robert Reising here. That is, I'm working with Wayne Holmes in meetings today and tomorrow. Going to be a beautiful one-story, three-bedroom home, as I said, backing up to the water, looking down the creek to the old railroad pilings where the trestle went, which then looks in further into what I'd call a swamp area. And last night I was out there, and guess what I saw but a beaver, and I bet that guy was four feet long, heading straight up the creek, so I don't know if that's good or bad. But it just shows that nature will always rebound, even in an industrial area, and it's really going to be a great addition to the neighborhood. And I look across the street, and there's three homes right across the street, and those homes are being upgraded as we speak. And there's more homes going in down the street, back by the condos, I'll call them the Cold Dot Condos, I don't have another name, but I expect that area is being revitalized, and my home will just be part of that revitalization.
Mr. Chairman? Thought it was a very interesting play myself. I didn't see someone wanting to put a home there, and then I looked at it and thought, oh, yeah, now I see why you do. Mr. McGory, I think.
Yeah. I suspect that that might have been a muskrat rather than a beaver, but neither, you sure?
Oh, no. It was a beaver. It had a tail as big as a.
Mr. McGory, I've seen it. It is a beaver.
Okay.
It's a big one. So, I think he lives right beneath the piling, actually, but I don't know what his future home building plans are.
All right, well, this isn't the Animal Planet Channel, sir.
Sorry.
Let's see if there are any other comments from.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Zuloff?
Well, unless somebody else has a comment, I was just going to make a motion to approve the application, subject to any conditions that I might have forgotten about that are on the report.
Second, David Miller.
There's been a motion and second, further discussion. Ms. Brownie, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Yes. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. McGory?
Pete, you're on mute.
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Zuloff?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Castile?
Yes.
And Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
That motion is approved and the application approved, and good luck to you, sir. That's an interesting idea, and I hope it meets with all of your expectations.
Thank you very much.
Next, commissioners, we have, I'll get back to my agenda here. We have a proposed amendment to the Sandusky City Planning and Zoning Code, Chapter 1157, and I understand that Mr. Josh Snyder is here to make a presentation.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of order. I want to point out that at least my copy, I think maybe everybody's copy that they received in the packet is not complete. It's like missing pages. The proposed ordinance is missing pages, I'm going to say, missing pages 12 through 24 somehow. I think maybe Mr. Snyder may have or is prepared to send a document, a text document or a Word document rather than a PDF with, because a PDF is just an image without searchable text, I think. But there might be some confusion on that. I think it's, I look forward to hearing Mr. Snyder's presentation, and we did discuss this a little bit, and maybe he'll comment on that, but be aware that, feel free to correct me, but it appears to me that we don't have the complete proposed ordinance in front of us.
Mr. Zuloff, you are correct. I discovered that late this afternoon. The complete ordinance is on the website, and I just emailed everyone a link that has the agenda, and you'll find the complete ordinance there, redlined.
And, Mr. Chairman, if anyone wants to see anything on screen, let me know. I have it pulled up, and I can share the full text of the ordinance to anyone that wants to have it visualized here.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we're at least ready to hear Mr. Snyder's presentation. So, Mr. Snyder, floor is yours.
Sure. Thank you, Penning Commission. I will summarize. There are many changes in Section 1157 proposed. Primarily, what the city has done is we have taken a model floodplain ordinance from ODNR, which is what is used in almost every city in Ohio, and what you'll see is the differences between our former or existing ordinance from 2008 to this new amended and updated ordinance. And so, there is many instances of terminology, terms themselves, and definitions that have been altered, added, otherwise updated to correspond with new proposed maps that will be coming out soon. And we don't have a date for the new maps, but those new zones and terminology is applicable to the city of Sandusky. So, it's important that we do get those updates in there. The other item of interest that we pulled out and spelled out is the removal of our self-imposed free board or additional height requirement for building within the flood zone. So, those are the real items of interest. There's probably too numerous to specifically, one by one, go through each added definition and term that has been added from the 2008 version, but it has been 12 years. Regulations have changed from FEMA, and thus is the impetus for the changes that you see in this ordinance.
Mr. Snyder, then, if I can summarize, then, what we are doing is making some required conforming changes, and then at the same time, we are addressing the, as you put it, the self-imposed free board requirement, which I think you've got a summary at the end, and you indicate that there have been 14, since 2016, when I assumed it was about then that we adopted this free board requirement. Since 2016, there have been 14 applications of those to waive that or to vary that. Thirteen were approved and one was withdrawn. None were denied.
That is accurate, except for the part about 2016 being a magic number for the last revision. 2016 is as far back as planning could draw their records from BZA as it pertains to variances from this exact section of codified ordinance.
Thank you for that clarification, and as I understand your communication, one of the reasons that staff is recommending, you in particular are recommending eliminating the free board requirement is, I'm trying to get to that communication, I think the issue has been that if we keep waiving the free board requirement, we will eventually find ourselves being pressured to waive the requirement that construction occur below the floodplain, the flood maximum. I'm not explaining that exactly right. Could you explain it better, please?
Sure, I'll try to. I think you were on your way. So, having a free board requirement or an additional elevation to build to, and us granting waivers for that, just in the last four years, there's 13 instances, granting that means, granting that waiver means a waiver from any elevation requirement because there are no conditional approvals. These are straight approvals of variance, so there's no condition. So, they don't even, those who get approved for these variances don't even have to meet FEMA's 577 established elevation. So, seemingly us setting the bar this high and then granting variance for the bar that's set this high, now there's no bar at all. And so, there may have been instances amongst those 13 where people are building below 577.
Okay. I was reasonably close, so I guess to put it another way, excuse the pun, we watered down the requirement, so, and basically washed it away, so I've got it. Mr. Snyder, does that complete your presentation?
Yeah, the only thing I will add is that in the, there is a section in there about local permitting of work in the floodplain, and we tweak the terminology to allow ourselves a little bit easier maintenance of floodplain and restoring floodplain on ourselves, on the city-owned properties, particularly in emergency events. So, that's the only other thing that we, you know, selfishly changed because it makes things easier on our own behalf in managing that floodplain and cutting down our own administration there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Snyder. Mr. Zuloff?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Snyder. As I mentioned, we chatted this afternoon, and I learned a little bit more about what was motivating this. So, what I assumed was that the 14 applications and the 13 waivers were evidence that somehow the requirements were unreasonable. I think what I realize now is part of the point was that when these waivers are granted, variances, or maybe they're both, I don't know, that there's no requirement at all anymore, or at least perhaps in some cases. So, I understand better why that was mentioned, and it makes me realize that maybe we need to do some more work on this and perhaps put some limitations on those variances, or make sure that they just don't produce carte blanche when that's not the intent at all, when the intent is, okay, it's owner, so now do anything you want, and then, you know, in 20 years, some new owner or prior owner, somebody's going to suffer the consequences. So, and I don't feel any urgency to sort this all out. It seems like we can deliberate this a little bit and maybe go through a couple of iterations. I was told that I did talk to Erie County also. Erie County, of course, has similar regulations, and they went through a similar process, and I think they went through several months of discussion before they settled on what they were going to do last time around. They also do have free board requirements. They're also thinking about eliminating their free board requirements and also updating their rules for the same reason we are. So, you know, it's well advised. I don't think it's an open and shut case. I point out that in 2019, we set a new record. The average for the month of June was, I believe, I'm working from memory here, but 574 and a half-ish feet, the average, was a new monthly high for all time for Lake Erie. That's only two and a half feet lower than the zero free board 577 number, right? So, during that month, of course, it varied, and then there were, and that's with zero sets, that's at Fairport, kind of the middle of the lake, deep water, little wind setup, not much variance, not much daily or hourly variance in the level there. They have waves, but they don't have the level variation. We have substantially more, and I was told in Toledo, someone from the Corps of Engineers, to the best of my recollection, said 27 feet was the theoretical maximum delta from high water to low water in the Mauna Kea Bay. So, the water levels can vary profoundly just based on weather conditions. So, we were somewhere in between. We get some changes, and Fairport gets little, we get some, and Toledo can get extreme changes. And of course, that was theoretical. I don't know if they've ever recorded that much, but we did last year record something on the order of a 12-foot or maybe more variation within a short period of time. Again, and we've seen it here too, but it, so, I would like, I'd volunteer to help work on it. I'd like us to talk to the county and see where they're headed, and because if the proposal wasn't complete and I wasn't able to study it and didn't have time, I appreciate the work we're doing. I think that Mr. Snyder's doing quality work, and I think it's an interesting idea, but I think it needs more consideration and more study. And there is no urgency, I don't think, other than, I don't think we're going to see the maps until maybe early this summer. It's the free board I think I'm most worried about. The additional language, I think we could do that tomorrow. That would be fine with me. The free board, I think, needs some more deliberation. My guess. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through you. Thank you, Mr. Zuloff. Mr. Jackson?
Yes, I have some neighbors that, because they say they're in the floodplain, are paying flood insurance. If this removal takes place, does that mean they may not be, they may not have to pay flood insurance?
No.
I don't know the answer, but I don't think it does. Yeah, Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, this is Josh. That is not the case. As long as they are in the mapped floodhazard area, they will have to pay flood insurance until the point when they can formally raise, if it's even possible, raise their property to be out of the. their, if it's even possible, raise their property to be out of the flood zone. And that's an extensive process on its own and a side process. But until something changes, and depending where they live, maybe the new map has them mapped out of the floodhazard area. But more than likely, if they were in it, they're probably gonna stay in it, and they will still have to pay that insurance until they have their house paid off. The only way you're not required to pay is if you can, if you have your house entirely paid off and have no lender to effectively insure it for.
Thank you.
Yep, Mr. Chairman.
Let me see if anybody else wants to speak first. Mr. Zuloff?
Thank you. Yeah, I was just gonna...
Other commissioners wishing to speak? I'm sorry, Mr. Zuloff, please proceed.
I just wanted to add that it will be helpful to make it clear. And Mr. Snyder was unequivocal about that. That added clarity, that no one's, this is not gonna save anybody a nickel on insurance, as far as I can tell.
I think that's right.
This is keeping up. And by the way, before I forget, there's some new terminology that we could, I think we need to amend the language a little bit anyway, because I think we, Mr. Snyder, I think, pointed out that the new terminology, which is very helpful, the 1% chance of flooding, which is more clear and better understood by most people than the 100-year floodplain, probably should be incorporated in the new ordinance, and has not been done yet. So we need to make that amendment anyway. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, additional questions or comments? I believe that the direction that Mr. Zuloff is headed is, I hate to project thoughts on you, Mr. Zuloff, but I suspect you're headed in the direction of moving to table this until such time as you have a chance to work with Mr. Snyder and perhaps make some additional or suggest some additional changes for the Planning Commission's consideration.
I'd be happy to, and if any other commissioner, I'm sure there are other commissioners that have thoughts, too. But maybe at least by next meeting, I'm sure we could have it together.
All right. Mr. Zuloff, maybe you'd care to make that as a motion?
So moved.
David Miller, second.
And a motion and second. Mr. Brony, this is a non-debatable motion. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. McGory?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Zuloff?
Yes.
Mr. Wayland?
Yes.
Ms. Castile?
Yes.
And Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
The motion passes, and the matter is laid on the table for hopefully consideration at our next meeting. See, on our agenda, we have a director's report. Holiday, is that you?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And what I had in mind for this was just a brief set of remarks to update the commission on some of the activities of our department, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman. And the idea came, for this came out of a conversation I had with Commissioner Zuloff, which I really appreciated, and agree that it makes sense to spend a few minutes, I think, updating the commission members on what our department's working on. So if I could just take a second here, I'm gonna touch on a couple of topics, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. But first off, you, I believe, are all aware that our department had scheduled some discussions with some neighborhoods regarding the potential for an expansion of the transient rental overlay districts. And just to update everyone, those discussions have been postponed. I think, given our current staffing levels, we are not going to be able to take that on in the foreseeable future. However, I have informed residents that were interested in that of their options under the zoning code to petition this body to do that at their location. So that may or may not happen, and we'll continue to monitor that. We also continue to take a look at the possibility of a designated outdoor refreshment area in downtown Sandusky. So you may recall that Tom Horstman gave a presentation at one of your previous meetings, and we've gotten some great feedback after that presentation. We've got some more outreach to do. And so we'll continue to talk with downtown businesses and anyone else that's interested in the topic, and do ultimately hope to make a presentation and a petition to the city commission for their consideration and potential creation here in the city of Sandusky. Lastly, I wanted to mention that we are very happy to announce that we've received a grant in the amount of $30,000 to start a transit study. And we are looking at some other funding in order to increase that amount to study our transit system. You know, Sandusky is really fortunate to have grown its transit system here in the city, and it actually services the entire county and the region. And we've got a great transit manager here in Tom Horstman. And I know Tom and I agree that there's additional opportunity with the transit agency. And so we're looking forward to launching a study that'll take a look at that. Everything from governance to service. We'll be working closely with some of the other area partners, as well as yourselves, and most likely a consulting firm to do that. So we look forward to more information on the transit study. But we are happy that the first piece of funding is in place for that, and we're looking forward to working with you all on that important piece of the community. And then lastly, we are working on applying to increase staffing here within the department. You know, we certainly want the department to continue to be beneficial for the community and provide the appropriate services to this body. And so we'll be increasing staffing here, hopefully in the near future. And that way, we'll be able to continue to be effective and continue to advance the community forward. So I'll just conclude by echoing Commissioner Brady's remarks, and thank you all for your service on this commission, such important work happening here. And I really appreciate your time this evening. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holiday. Commissioners, any questions or comments for Mr. Holiday? The only observation that I will make, Mr. Holiday, is I've received a fairly significant amount of feedback questioning the ties of the initial Dora district and whether it needed to extend as far as it did. So I think that, I mean, I know that, so we all knew at the meeting that would be part of the discussion going forward. And the only other thought that I wanted to share was that with respect to the transient overlay, I want to make sure that that is something that is being initiated by a significant number of residents. I think that, for my part, I don't mean to speak in front of my colleagues, for my part, I would be much more comfortable knowing that, opening up a hearing on the matter, knowing that a number of residents wanted that. And if it turns out that one resident wants it, and a lot of people on the block or blocks don't want it, then, you know, I'm not really sure whether we should start down that path. I can foresee a situation in which, you know, if it's approached properly, and the neighbors are canvassed, that it would be something they would support. Ultimately, those overlay districts do increase property values in that area. And they tend to do, they do tend to cause the properties to be spruced up a bit. Anyone's driven through the Cove District, they've got pretty good evidence of that right there. So, but, you know, it's obviously a neighborhood question, and I think it has to be handled right so that there is buy-in among the residents before we start the process. Because once we start the process, if it isn't, then we're not gonna have buy-in. And a good idea may go by the wayside just because we got the cart ahead of the horse. And I realize, you don't have enough staff to do it right now. And so I think that was smart to postpone that. Additional questions or comments, or business for the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Zuloff?
Since we touched on the Dora, I would agree that it probably would be better to start small. I'm concerned about the rather, there's probably, there must be two miles of border on the thing. And I don't know how someone carrying a cup around possibly could know where to stop. The ones I've seen are a little smaller, I think, but maybe more appropriate to start on a block or two and then see where it goes. But I'm a little concerned about, I like the idea, but I think it's probably maybe better done incrementally. I don't know. That's my impression. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments, or other business for the Planning Commission?
Just thank you, Mr. Holiday. I think it's good to get update from staff from time to time. I know we do that through our reports, but a little extra is appreciated. Thank you.
Hearing no one else wishing, or seeing no one else wishing to speak, or hearing them, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, everyone.
Goodbye.